Okay, we will call the meeting to order. Everybody like to grab a chair? Do we? No. Will the clerk please call the roll? Thank you. Present.
Mayor Protem Francina. Councilmember Blatz. Councilmember Haney. Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Chair Quillisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioner Corbin.
Here.
Commissioner Jagiello. Commissioner Lottis is absent. Commissioner Powers.
Here.
Okay, we have quorums. Let's see. Approval of the, pardon me, pledge of allegiance. Randy, would you like to?
Break in the 2019, actually. Are we all ready? You can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have the approval of the-
Feel free.
Bring your name tag.
Ray.
Regular agenda.
And for the record, I would like to say, just before the meeting started, I was informed that Commissioner Lottis had called in sick, unable to attend as a result.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, discussion. Discussion of topics of concern to the Planning Commission. Recommendation, whole roundtable discussion. So, Steve, you wanna kick it off?
Sure, sure. I would, I'd like to begin by asking, by asking a favor of, of the council, or the staff, or to whomever it applies. If there is a regularly scheduled interval and, and time for which these joint meetings are going to be held, I think it would be good to let the, let the commission know. This was, the existence of this joint meeting tonight was not on our last meeting agenda. And so, the best way for us to prepare is to counsel each other as a group and decide on maybe two or three topics we'd like to discuss. And we didn't get that opportunity. So if there is a schedule for these joint meetings, could you let us know? And then we'll be able to prepare better for them. Thank you.
Could very quickly respond. I apologize if you did not get that advance notice. But I'll let you know that there is a schedule. And again, it could be subject to change to the city council. But right now, they're scheduled for the first meeting, which would be the, the second Tuesday in January, May, and September.
Terrific, okay.
So then three a year?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is that tradition, policy, as needed?
That's, that's what the, what the council had worked out in the past in terms of its expectation, and that could certainly be modified.
Great.
Everyone else gets one. They are the supreme commission.
We're the big winners.
You are, under the most good-
Yeah, first place, our prize is one meeting. Second place is three.
Terrific. Well, I'd invite my fellow commissioners to chime in. But I had, I had four things that, that are useful to discuss. And then we can pick among those or any others that might be introduced. First of all, we have talked briefly at the commission about fences, hedges, and walls. I did a search of the municipal code and found forty-seven separate references to fences, hedges, and walls, about a third of which are, are in Title X. And I have not researched all forty-seven of them. But I think there's a good deal of cleanup that needs to be done there. Composition of the Planning Commission. With the retirement of John Merck, there is no longer a licensed architect on the Planning Commission. And the municipal code says there shall be one. Now, there are a number of varied solutions that involve changes to the municipal code that could resolve this. Another way is to try to find somewhere another licensed architect beyond John Merck, beyond Steve Foster, beyond, I'm not sure who else, Mark Whitman. Maybe there's some other architects in town, and convince someone to join the Planning Commission. Absent, one of those two solutions, I'm not sure what to do. Yes, ma'am.
Have you done that? I mean, wouldn't that be what you would normally do before you consider the problem?
Go, go try to recruit another licensed architect?
That would be what we would do, not what the commission has to do.
That would be, as I say, that's, that's one alternative. The other would be to change the wording of the municipal code. I've suggested one, one way of doing that to, to Luke Connolly. And I don't, I don't know that he's done anything more than just look at it right now.
Okay, can I ask another question?
Sure.
Would you do that because you can't find anyone? Or because you think it's not necessary?
I think the requirement, my, my personal feeling is the requirement for a licensed architect is, is an after effect of folding the Architectural Review Board into the Planning Commission.
That is the history of it.
And, and whether that's necessary at this point, I don't feel qualified to judge. I think it's always useful to have an architect, but I'm not sure how many we have in the city that haven't already served. And how many of those, whatever, there's some small number, would even be willing to join the Planning Commission?
Thank you, I understand that.
Okay. We have the matter of cleaning up the municipal code. We all know that there's lots of stuff to do there. I've been sort of scribbling at Title X myself, but am far from done. And I think we need to get on with that. Even, even if we're not suggesting changes to the code that involve policy changes, we ought to have some kind of aggregate text amendment that cleans up all the things that are obviously errors or omissions or typos or whatever. Lastly, and I've asked several times about this, there's the topic of absences. I understand that it's in the code that a commission seat could be declared vacant after a certain number of unexcused absences or other absences, title of which I'm not clear on. I have asked, who decides whether an, an absence is excused? And so far, I don't know. I don't know who makes the decision. I don't know who's counting. I know that we note absences at every meeting because we do a roll call, just like we did tonight. But other than that, I'm, I'm left with, with a lot of uncertainty. So those are my four things. Vice Chair Nolan, would you like to? I know we've, we've had a number of things that the Planning Commission is interested in.
Yes, I, well, two of them off the top of my head would be, something that comes up invariably is parking, which I know we had on our list. Oh, Jesus. Oh, thank you. And the other one was, it would be design guidelines. I think it's an important one. And that's another one we've discussed where we have several overlays and some of them that overlap on one property. And it would be to do a comprehensive guideline. And then with specific area guidelines, say, if like for the arcade or anything else that was an important area. But I think that's an important, a good one that we may want to consider.
At least, at least ask the council, is this something you want us to go away and work on?
Right. And then the other ones that we had looked at that I, I mean, I'm not sure, you know, we can't do it all this year, but I think our priorities was to just go through the landscape standards again. And I'm, I'm bringing that up mostly because of water use. Did we, do we want to look at that again and make it more stringent? Do we want to make any changes from the state mandate that we felt was more applicable to our community? And, and that could also include landscape fire issues, too. So, I think, for now, those are the ones I thought were important.
Bobby? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to preempt you.
Well, you know, I'm like a, I'm always asking for a vision statement, which is not a general plan, but is more of a, both an economic and a philosophic statement of where we see the city in five, ten, and fifteen years. And I think that's really important. And going in the complete opposite direction, but not thorough, totally, I think it would be nice to have a goal topic every year. And one thing that I thought of, reading the opinion page in the newspaper, I read that the high school, as we all know, needs a new pool. And that it's estimated it's going to be a sixteen mil, six million dollar project. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but a home pool beautifully landscaped with a state-of-the-art cover is a hundred thousand dollars. So if you told me this was going to cost a million dollars, I'd say, well, that makes sense. But I don't understand the six million dollars. Is it permitting? I mean, what is it? And then the other thing that came up along that line was the idea that in a number of communities, what they do is they build a community pool that the, that the high school, that the schools use. And I think that that would be a wonderful goal for the city of Ojai is to have a community pool. I think that at all levels of ages and everything else, that would be a great thing to do. Now, I know, and I think in lieu of the fact that, you know, maybe, given our water situation, everybody having their own pool in the backyards, not necessarily the best way to approach it. And the idea that we have a community in this neighborhood, which I might argue yes or no. This would be a community building thing. There is an athletic club, but it's expensive. And not everybody can afford to pay hundreds of dollars to join and hundreds of dollars every month to use that club. And I think that for kids, teenagers, all sorts of ages, that a community pool would be a really great goal. And then we could team up with the school so that they would get the pool that they need.
So, Mayor Bobby, just on, how does the Planning Commissions, what is their role in that? How do you see that as a role for the Planning Commission?
It's not.
Okay. I just, I was hoping you had a tie-in somehow.
Well, it's, it goes into the vision. It goes back into this vision statement of where we want our community to be and what it wanted to look like, what the economic basis of it is. Where are we drawing our money from? Where are we, where are we placing the city as, you know, what is the city doing to service the people who live here as opposed to just taking money from them? What do we want the, the total vision of this city to look like? To feel like, how are we paying for it? So, to me, I mean, we can talk about zoning ordinance till we're blue in the face, but if we don't have a good, solid vision of what this community is, we might as well forget it. So, that's my answer. Bobby, when I was growing up, there was three, at least three swimming pools, at least three. And we just took for granted. There was Ojai Hala, there was Wheeler Hot Springs, there was Matilla H. And of course, I, we also used the pool at Thatcher, which, because, you know, if you're, my father worked there, but a lot of people used it, that didn't work there. So there were pools everywhere. And no matter how poor you were, you could get on a bus or carpool. And it was a, it's, it creates a family-friendly community. Okay, now I think we have the water park in Casitas. But with the Ojai heat, I absolutely support what you're saying. And I think that's part of a vis, part of the vision is, how do we keep our small-town family-friendly? I mean, so many things tie into that. But a, a community pool is something that people have talked about for decades, it seems. You know, ever since the other ones closed. That's all, yeah.
Other thoughts? I guess my, my vision is that the Planning Commissions were created in California to deal with the issue of land use planning. And it's not always the most pleasant responsibility. But that is the fundamental activity of the commission in advice to the city council. When the Architectural Review Board was set up years ago, we were one of the only cities that had one. And that is where the arch, the idea of having an architect came from. When they decided there wasn't enough, or they chose to, to merge the two, that's what created a larger commission. And then people tend to, on the daily basis, the design review and that kind of thing becomes much more of a, an immediate request. And the land use planning gets put on the back burner. So I would really like to see us in the next couple of years join our neighbor, the city of Ventura, and the county that surrounds us, both of whom are doing their general plan. And as part of that, what Bobby's suggesting, you know, it is the vision discussion with the whole community. Where are we going and what are our priorities? And do we need to adjust our land use? Based on what comes to council and some of these little niggly problems, particularly that Bill and I have been wrestling with, are a result of us not actually doing the, that difficult job of land use planning in the general fund. So this year, we do have some money in the budget. I believe, Mr. City Manager, you have an RFQ out there looking for some, you know, consultant that specializes and see if we can get somebody that has the kind of credentials and experience that we need. And then can, in conjunction with the Planning Commission, maybe get that moving.
Excellent.
Other thoughts?
Just another larger lesson from the pool issue, if I might, Mayor. The other point, I think, Bobby, is that it points out that no agency can do a lot of these things by themselves.
Right.
They need collaboration. We cannot, it's not realistic to have a pool run by just a school district, especially with a school district with declining enrollment. And it, there, it's such a, it's actually rebuilt an auditorium in my previous life and dealt with it as an administrator. You've got to have a dedicated, professional staff with an adequate budget to keep it from falling apart. And I don't think a school system's capable of doing that, frankly. And I don't, and I've talked to Superintendent about this. I don't think he disagrees. That's one of the issues. Where do you find the, the organizational support with all the other demands on their money for something like that? So it's almost something that I, I don't think is realistic unless it is part of a joint collaboration, multi-agency effort.
And beside, beyond the city boundaries with us as simply a supportive. There is an actual collaboration underway right now with the Y that has met with the school district. And I've attended some of the meetings. And we've, well, first of all, the history of this, and it gets us away from land use planning. But the history is that there was a community pool. And it is the pool over at Nordoff that is not the best pool to have a water polo game in with a shallow end. My kids all went there and, and played water polo. And I, twenty, thirty years ago, we were part of the committee that revitalized the community pool. But the problem is that the school district, then, it's on their property and they use it most of the time. And then the, the scheduling with the general community. And, you know, and then what Bill says, you know, we should all remember the universal solvent is water.
Yes.
And in an auditorium or a water pool. But the thought was, I don't know whether the school district is willing to go along with it, but one of, you know, real estate's expensive up here, but they got a big piece of property over there. And the pool that they have is not a bad pool, you know, with a little, you know, remedial work for recreation. But for a serious pool and swim teams and, you know, all of that sort of thing, like the athletic club, having a really nice meter pool adjacent to it and then have, the thought was, is that if the, the whole valley could get behind this through, through the Y, the Y, I guess there would be problems with that.
Well.
I don't know what, what the deal is now with YMCA. When I was a kid, that was, you know, had religious overtones and separation of church and state. But now that they call themselves just the Y and is a nonprofit, it may be that we, in somewhere in there, that would be a wonderful thing for the community to have, to bring us all together. And that would be a great location because, in a way, that is sort of central to the population area, this part of the Ventura and Ojai Valley. So, anyway, good thought.
I'd, I'd have to agree with you in, about the, about the existing pools and, and note strongly that a LAP pool, I happen to have collaborated in putting in a LAP pool in Cincinnati when we lived there, at, at our children's school. The requirements for a LAP pool or a water polo pool are very different for the, from those for a community pool, which requires a lot of fairly shallow space so that small children can in fact play there. And if you look at the athletic club, there's not one pool there. There's multiple pools there. And different groups of people use different pools. And so I think we need to keep that in mind as we try to put together some kind of a plan here. And maybe the existing pool at the high school becomes the community pool. And a new one that's suitable for high school athletics is what gets built. I don't know. But it, it's certainly worthy of study and it would be a great thing for the community.
Mayor Steve, I, I guess the, the problem I have with the school board throwing out this number is we just taxed ourselves. We just put a bond for what, thirty-five million?
Thirty-five, yep.
And I'm sorry, it seems like they need to recognize and go back and reprioritize what they feel are the best use of those monies. And if having a community pool and a pool that fits the needs of the high schools, then they need to make that choice. But I think we've already been partnered up with them. And now what they're saying is, no, now we need to repartner. So until I see something in concrete from them, and I agree with you, Bobby, because I put swimming pools in, I don't see a pool of that magnitude being six million dollars. So I don't know where they got their number. But until I see accurate numbers and an accurate presentation to the community, right now, it's just numbers and pie in the sky.
You wouldn't mind being paid six million to put a pool in, but-
Well, Chester will tell you that-
Yeah, we'll sign that contract.
Yeah, you'll sign that contract tonight. Yeah, tonight, yes.
But the reality, but that's what I'm trying to say. The reality is, all this is pie in the sky until someone acts, actually sits down and does an overlay and starts doing their homework.
Yeah.
And they need to do that.
And finds a dedicated source of repair and maintenance funds, too. And that's the problem.
You know, and that's part of, and that's part of doing business as a school district. The other part is, and, and if it's a community pool, then so be it. We figure out how to do, how to share those responsibilities. So I struggle with that. And then I also struggle with the downtown acreage. The fact that, that there's no public discussions going on with that right now, what's going to happen? And I truly believe this. Someone or some group is going to champion it. And what they're going to do is they're going to lead. They're going to take the lead. And they're going to get the community behind it. And guess what? The school board is going to be stuck on the back end looking up. And the school board needs to take an aggressive action and create a plan for what they're going to do with that downtown property. And again, I, I don't see any reason why they can't do it. And I'm, and, and I just get tired of, of this excuse, we can't afford it. Or this excuse that, that, well, we have other things that are, that are priorities. Everyone knows in this community that that, that that group is struggling financially. And that the best thing in their interest is to figure out how to generate some type of income with their properties. And for them to be waiting this long, like you said, my fear is someone else in the community is going to champion it. And then what's going to happen is you're going to get a foot, you're just going to get a swelling of support for those people that have no, so what I'm looking for, where they have, where they have nothing, no engagement with the school officials. And that's, and I think that's going to be a problem. I think it's going to be a huge problem, so.
I, I grew up with that community pool. I'm very in favor of it. But pools unfortunately are luxury items. And if you don't have the money to do it, you got to be realistic. Right now, with the school district budgeting and everything else, trying to put together a plan that isn't going to involve the school predominantly paying for it, I don't think this council's about to be able to, to really do anything substantive on it. And let's not forget, while I was at Nordoff, they stopped using that pool. The off-site swimming, water polo, other pool activities had to go to Villanova, other private schools. Luckily, those are geographically close and we have that option a little bit. But that pool still is predominantly an asset of the school. It is not predominantly a community asset. During the week, during most of the time, it's not an option. And during the summer, it wasn't even, back in the day, it was only open, I think, one day a week or something like that. It wasn't like it was a real viable community asset because the overhead was just too much. The cost of having lifeguards there and other upkeep and other things was always a problem. I think in a priority list, it would be fantastic to have, but the realities behind it are a little, a little more difficult. But that being said, I have a couple of questions on more substantive items. I think the pool is a great discussion. I don't think it's necessarily a Planning Commission discussion completely. But I wanted to know, really, this issue with the architect on the, the Planning Commission board, how do the commissioners feel? I mean, is it a, is it a key strategic, you know, expert that's necessary for many decisions? Or is it something that we maybe can move?
Well, my thought is, being on the Planning Commission, is other than John, I felt Bobby and Chester, even though not, I don't think licensed architects have a lot of knowledge to impart. So maybe we don't need a California licensed architect, given the expertise of you two.
And Bobby, you were going to comment?
I was just going to say that, you know, I have been surprised, in the time that I've been here, how many people are involved in architectural design who actually aren't licensed. And I think that the licensing is maybe not something to get hung up on necessarily. I think if you have a design background, that that certainly, I mean, it'd be great to have another licensed architect, but John wasn't even practicing, was he? So I, I think it's kind of a moot point. I think it's important to have people who have a design background, especially since we do design review. But whether they're actually licensed, I don't, I personally don't think that that's critical.
In the state of California, you don't need a license to design residential construction. And, well, maybe anywhere, that's maybe true, but here-
Yeah. Was Frank Lloyd Wright ever a licensed California architect? I don't think so. You've made a good point.
Well, Frank Lloyd White walked through the door.
No, but I'm just saying, there, there are a lot of, you know, people of reputation, even people who live here, who, and in fact, I think the museum just did a book on some things that were designed by, so. Anyway, I would, I would agree with, not being on the Planning Commission. I don't, I see the Planning Commission as an advisory group to the city council on land use planning. And this other function, which is nice, there are other ways to do that. Maybe even revitalizing a design review committee or something separately. But we, even tonight's discussion, when we, with no offense to the idea that we do need something to bring us more as a community, as far as the pool, particularly as hot as it is here and all that, we talk about everything except the fundamental function that really doesn't get that much attention. It's not a criticism so much of the Planning Commission as it is the city council and the staff who support the Planning Commission and provide that direction and expertise. And I think we're going to do something about that this year.
Yeah, with that said, my focus is usually on very practical things that affect our decisions. And if you go back to that, the general plan is probably the most important thing, as far as I'm concerned. It, because it gives us vision, it gives us guidance. It's, it's something we can refer back to. And so to me, that would be a priority. But there, there are subcategories that I think that are snags that we run into all the time. And parking is, is a big one. Because it, there's businesses that want to move in here and there's always considerations about parking and where they're going to go. And then in lieu parking, where those fees go? What are we doing for alternative parking? The downtown is quite congested on weekends. So that is a very practical, real problem that we face every single time we have to make an approval for a, a-
For a business.
Commercial business. And, and even, well, residential, residential as well, right? So, so to me, you know, we're, we're already tackling the fence and hedge issue. So that's already on the agenda. I think parking was on the agenda as, as an item. an item. Uh, I think it's important to prioritize it and, and the general plan. And so, those, those items there are enough, if we really, uh, if we really tackled the general plan, that's a, that's a big item right there. I know there's a lot of stuff that has to be done prior to, to us reviewing it. Uh, so in the meantime, I'd like to tackle the parking issue and...
Randy?
Mayor, I have two comments. One, I agree, the parking issues here. Um, I think that we're generating a list that I'd, um, like to see, um, Steve and, and the chair get together, and then send this back to the planning commission and actually let them discuss it and digest it, and really come up with their own, um, set of priorities. So, I, so I agree, um, with what each one of you are saying, but, um, I think you can do that as a commission. I just wanted to go back and touch on being licensed. Because I think what I, what I just heard was, license doesn't matter. I kinda heard that. And, and I just wanna be clear that that's what I didn't hear. Because a licensed architect brings a lot to the table. A licensed landscape architect brings a lot to the table. A licensed builder brings a lot to the table. Take away the license, take away that license, and you won't get the continual education. You won't get the life experiences. You won't get the innate knowledge and skillset that they bring from testing, upgrading their, their knowledges, um, interacting with other licensed contractors, interacting with building and safety officials. So, I'm just saying that, um, without that license, you can't do any of those things. So, I don't wanna, um, ever think that we wanna subject our planning commission to something less than the, the highest level of review. And I, just for a second there, I thought I was hearing licensing didn't matter.
Well, these are two different subjects. One is planning commissioners, and the other is, is whether or not professional licenses have value. I would agree with you that professional licenses do. But there are lots of professional licenses, and you can bring people that are all licensed in the same industry or the same, uh, specialty, and then they will disagree as to what is good judgment and what is artistic and the rest of it. Uh, what I was hearing, or at least what I was saying, is, is that I don't think that not having a license should disqualify people from being considered. Obviously, if you get somebody who has all that, uh, then that'd be great. Uh, but it, it shouldn't preclude, and right now, it is, uh, it's a screen that precludes, uh, some people. And I don't, did Rodney Walker ever, uh, was he ever licensed? Uh, I, you know, there are a lot of, that, that's the point. It doesn't mean that people with, uh, real skill and talent, uh, should not be excluded. Now, I realize we have, that's if we only need one, so there's plenty of opportunity for people without licenses. But, uh, I think we've skirted that rule for fifty years around here, or however long we've had the rule. Michael Head wasn't a licensed architect, but, uh, Michael did a lot of work, uh, and a lot of civic advice.
Just a comment. Um, and this gets back to Steve, what you had brought up initially, and it gets back to, you know, what are the guidelines for selecting planning commissioners? And I think, and I'm, I happen to be a licensed landscape architect and a licensed landscape contractor, and I tend to agree with, with Randy. But what you could do in the guidelines, because this is a small community, and we have a limited pool to draw from, you could state the criteria, and then there could be like a subset, you know, if you can't find the licensed person, that maybe you have some additional criteria. Because like you said, there may be somebody who practiced as an architect, or not a licensed architect, but has the experience. But that you would definitely look at that criteria and make sure that you had someone. I personally, I've been on the commission for eight, I guess eight and a half years. And I find that those that are practicing it in the profession, we bring a lot to the table because we're, we're constantly in that practice. And there's a lot of crossover, too. Um, but I think we do bring something to the table that I, I think is really important. So, just a comment.
Ray?
Well, I, I would agree, I would agree that it would make sense that our guidelines, if we, uh, if we do decide that it's not mandatory required that it's a licensed architect, that it say preferably that that spot would be filled by a licensed architect.
Highly desirable, yeah.
Yeah. I agree with that.
I could co-sign that, that it's highly desirable, but I, I don't think it's necessary to have it, um, have it a necessity. Um, and I wanted to bring it up in anecdote, because I met with someone the other day, um, to speak about, uh, fire safety and earthquake sa- safe buildings. And, um, though highly trained in England, uh, she's not licensed here, and she's the one that designed the two buildings at Ojai Foundation that survived the fire. Yet she's not a licensed designer, and she's a very active home designer and very involved with several of the Woolsey, uh, of the Ventura homes, and helping to rebuild and redesign those. So, um, there's, you know, real life experience on a daily basis, yet not California licensed.
Let's talk about fences and hedges.
Well, real quickly, I have one question that ties into where we just were. Because the next question would be, we, if I'm correct, right, Mr. Merk, and there was one other planning commissioner who's, who are no longer going to be on the...
In the past, Steve Foster was also on the planning commission, yeah.
So, I just, real quickly, I wondered what the commissioners feel, 'cause there, is this, do we wanna fill those spots, or is it time to consider reducing those two spots down on the commission, how the commissioners feel about that?
Well, there's only one spot right now.
It's only one, okay.
Yeah, it's only one.
Foster left, and somebody else replaced him. Maybe I was the one, I don't know.
Okay.
But we've, we've had, for as long as I know, had an architect, a practicing architect, or a person with arc, with formal architecture training, um, on the commission. And I don't know exactly what Bobby's background is, if that's it.
Formal degree in architecture, and so does she.
So do I. And so, I just choose not to have a license, 'cause I do residential.
Yeah. But as it stands, we have, we have six members.
Six, right now, okay. But never mind.
But that was my point, was that Chester and Bobby are both skilled in architectural design. So, we have that input, having a requirement of someone who's a licensed architect or even an architect period, might be redundant to the skillsets we already have on the commission.
At the same time, having recently witnessed John's retirement, we can see that a given skillset can disappear from the commission at any time. So, we need, if, if we feel that architectural training and practice, or both, is important on the planning commission, then we shouldn't lose sight of that in the guidelines for choosing planning commissioners.
Oh, I agree with you on that, yeah.
Just another comment. Um, architects, and I'm a licensed landscape architect, part of our training is just building in specific for our field. We do a lot of land use planning in our, part of our education, and then sometimes even part of our, our jobs, too. So, I think that's something else important that we bring to the table.
I think...
Why don't we ask Paul Crabtree?
Location of a, location of a community pool might be considered a land use issue.
We should ask Paul Crabtree to come back to the planning.
I'd love it.
Yeah, I mean, he's, he's a master urban planner. I mean, he would, he's a great asset. If you're listening, Paul, I'm recruiting you.
Come back.
I'm gonna see him next week.
I was heartbroken to see him leave.
Yeah. Well, he was, he, well, I'll, I'll not bring him.
Yeah, going, going back to, I think Randy alluded to this, and I would support it, is that we're here tonight to talk about the general planning of the community as opposed to programs. And a lot of this is brought up as excellent during the election years and candidates running for office, and, you know, what the priorities are. But, uh, we need to focus in on some of these kind of, uh, I was gonna say naughty, K-N-O-T, N-A-U-G-H-T, yeah, issues like, you know, what do we do about the fences and hedges? Because I didn't think much about it. I know Bill's brought it up several times, until I started, uh, reading all this stuff of the Paradise Fire and all these other places, that there's, uh, people saying, you know, fences are fuses that, you know...
With fences are like fire lines to the house.
Yeah. And then you and I attended the meeting where we talked with the fire department, and the fire department said, well, you know, it's, it is an issue, but we can deal with that one, 'cause we knock 'em over and break the, you know, cut the fuse. What bothers us are the combustible hedges that, uh, we have all over town.
Right.
Now, I know that's not, that isn't a specific task for the planning commission, it's a policy decision. But, uh, since you brought it up, I think that that is something that we ought to be looking at and seeing what, is there a practical way to start approaching that?
Yeah, and I think that's, it, it points out, you know, I remember when I first ran, one of the issues was the short-term rentals, because there'd been such a long suspension of enforcement. That's where we are with fences and hedges and walls.
Exactly right.
Extended, multi-year suspension of enforcement. We, you know, we've had, uh, it was put in there, I believe, as a character-defining, uh, issue for the community. That was reaffirmed with the, uh, the, uh, that consultant that we brought in, I forget the name of it exactly.
The Neighborhood?
The Neighborhood, uh, that, that was affirmed by that. Um, we had a, uh, we had an attempt to lift, partially lift the suspension years ago that turned into a real community uproar. But that doesn't take away from the issue that, yeah, there's fire safety, uh, uh, community character. Um, and anytime you have an issue of, uh, long-term suspension of enforcement, it's a, it's a, it's a bad mix. And we're gonna, and, and how to figure out how to move from where we are to something more clear and predictable is a, is a challenge. I, I, I fully agree. Um, I, I, but I, 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 I'm concerned, because I see people walling themselves off from the street all over town. And I don't, I think that's a threat to our character as well as to fire safety and, and, uh, personal safety, frankly. And, um, we gotta decide whether we wanna, whether we wanna enforce our change or do something, but it's a proliferating problem.
I think the, the commission, I think, was in general agreement that the public safety aspects of this, which involve sightlines...
To the front door.
Particularly around intersections, but also around driveways mid-block.
Right.
Um, simply have to be taken care of. The rest of it is more community character, aesthetics, or whatever.
Yeah, absolutely.
But the public safety side has to be dealt with. And there are a number of areas of the city right now, which are basically grandfathered into being dangerous intersections.
Well, let's, let's do, remember a little bit of history, because council attempted to focus on public safety.
I watched.
Many years ago, if you recall. The problem is, is that's a, that's a very nuanced and delicate matter to just focus on that through code enforcement, rather than kinda going broad brush and just everything has to come down now. And that's where we got into trouble. It was very difficult to use a, a scalpel rather than a, than a, you know, than a, than a hammer, uh, on the, on the hedges thing, excuse me. And, and I, and I, I don't have an easy answer on that, but that, that's a, a challenge we, at least some of us have been through, and I'm glad to see it coming back. I think it took too long. You know, we, we initially resuspended on the basis of hoping to get a, a staff recommendation soon about how to proceed. That never happened. Uh, so now, I think we're, we're finally getting into a place where we've gotta, you know, we've gotta maybe take all of our experience to bear and figure out how to, how to move forward here. But it's, it's an example of a, of a community character issue and a visioning issue that, that we, uh, we gotta figure a way out of.
Well, I, you cannot take any, we all know that you cannot take any single problem in isolation. Not the parking, not the fences. What's driving some of this, uh, people walling themselves off, and what's destroying the character of the small town, is the ever-increasing traffic. And a lot of people are gonna wall, the more you have traffic, the more people are gonna want to barricade the, the fumes, the noise, the, the, you know, all of that is, that's what's driving it, I think. That's one of the things that's driving it.
Now, I don't think it's the only thing driving it.
Not the only thing, but it's...
There's a, I call it the Montecito Syndrome, you know, where it's my little, uh, my little place separated from everybody else, as opposed to being a front porch city, you know? It, it's also a mentality difference, I think.
Yeah, that's a part.
So, it's an immigration problem.
Well, I don't, I didn't say that way.
But when you live on a street where there's constant traffic, and that traffic is gonna increase unless we have a really good traffic plan that doesn't put cars as the priority. And you already know that I, how I think. And I wanna go back for just a second to the parking. Don't just look at lack of parking, look at why there's lack of parking, and look at the parking that there is. And I still don't know if we have the, the signage directing people to the more obscure parking. Um, but if, the, the moment you increase parking, you're telling people, you know, you're making it easier for people to drive. And that, so you want to consider that. I mean, that's a topic unto itself.
And your point being, and it goes right back to the general plan.
Yeah.
Because all of these elements feed into it, including issues such as public safety.
Sure.
That is a fundamental criterion, that's it, Kathy.
Would it be, uh, you know, I know that the general plan is, you know, coming soon, but would it be a good idea, I mean, I know we're going over these in planning commission, to start just coming up with the ideas or suggestions or recommendations, so that when, when the general plan is actually gonna be done, we can actually have that input? So, in other words, we're doing studies right now, and as far as the parking goes, we're, we're looking at a parking study, not saying, oh, we're going to add parking.
Yeah.
And that takes into account everything. You know, maybe we don't put any more parking spaces. I'm, I'm not...
It's just a way...
But we do need to, like, look at it, and maybe...
We need to look at it, yeah.
Part of, I think, is the issue is that in our code, it says, you know, if you're a business, you have to have so many parking spaces, or if you're residential and you're gonna have the ADU. And that's kinda where we start running into trouble. And maybe there are alternatives and different ways we can look at it, which hopefully would go into the general plan. So, it's more like...
In fact, we just dealt with a case...
Yeah.
Out in the East End, where there were two different businesses using a common parking area, and their clientele arrived at completely different times of the day.
So, shared use parking, which is in our code.
So, it, so it made sense to, to modify the parking requirements there.
Yeah. Can we go back for just a second to the fence? I want you all to, to go look where I've been renting, and I've probably lived there for, for many years, 'cause I gotta live in the city. But go to 208 North Ventura Street, and you'll see...
What's the address?
208 North Ventura Street, that's where I live. It's right in the heart of town.
Little white house with a little white fence in front.
Little white fence. And I just wanna say, you know, not everyone, uh, has a backyard, okay? I, uh, when I, um, hired, um, that fence company, they told me, they knew the city code, and they told me that I could not build it as high as I wanted to. And because I'm a renter, I, I paid for it myself, but I went along with it. But you, this is an example of how that impacts someone's life. That means I can never relax in my front yard with my dog, because it's always going to try to jump over, okay?
Yes, exactly.
I'm not the only renter with that problem. And the back, I mean, it's, it's, I, I can, I always have to supervise my dogs. It means I have to be home every three hours, because the backyard is not secure either. It's not really a backyard. Not every renter has a backyard. So, what you, you know, your criteria is gonna affect renters.
Um, if you watched the meeting that we had...
I watched the meeting, it was a great discussion.
And, and that, that very same topic came up, about the fences, about, about having enough privacy so that people will use the front of their house, so that the streets aren't dead. And this is the only town I've ever lived in that does not have really any street life. And I miss that. I am a front porch sitter. I come from the East Coast. And I've always had a front porch. But you do need a certain amount, and three feet doesn't make it. So, and I, and I think what you just said is really important, that, that it's, it's the ideas that we need, the visions that we need, that we then fill in with the specifics of our general plan. But you can't start with the, the specifics without having a big picture.
Thank you. Yes. It's true.
Well, the last meeting we had on the fence, we, uh, we suggested we, we asked staff to provide a, a matrix, right, um, to give us, because we outlined all the problem areas with the fence, I, I thought we did. And what's the existing code, and what, what problem we need to solve, you know? And so, that way, we're, we're clear on what problem we're actually solving. And I think if we get that, I, I don't think this is an insurmountable problem that is gonna take more than one or two meetings. I mean, it's not that complicated to me. And, especially if we isolate where the problems are, and then, then we can have those discussions on those problems. So, I think we're, we're ready, uh, to deal with that as soon as we get that from staff.
Okay.
I agree.
Ray?
Um, this isn't about fences, it's a, it's a larger conversation that ties into Bobby's.
I found this on the web, so what's the problem, the problem?
That was funny. Um, and that has to do with the, the fifty or a hundred-year vision, which I personally have written about, of, of the city. So, in fifty years, we just are, end up... about, of, of the city. So in 50 years, we just are, end up with what we end up with. And I'm, I'm a, I'm a big proponent of, of practices that go from your end goal and work backwards, and what it takes. And land use and city-owned land is on my radar. Like, how are we going to use the city land? What is the, the, what are the most, as we enter the new year, what are the highest priorities council has for us to look at to feed into the overall big vision of the city? There are smaller priorities. I consider hedges and fences a smaller priority to the, to bigger cultural issues in terms of economy, employment, affordable housing, which to me are a little larger, larger subjects, probably with more moving parts than hedges and fences. But I would like to know, as a planning commissioner from, from the council, at some point early in the year, what are the priorities that really expand on the larger vision of the city? And if council doesn't have that vision, then possibly have a workshop where you start honing in on that.
That is what a general plan is about.
General plan.
Yeah.
Well
Nobody wants to go there, because it's hard work.
Well, well, in, in my mind, they're a little different.
I think it's different, too. And I think that, I think we need more of an economic vision, that
It's an element of the general plan.
Well, I don't know.
It is, it's an element.
Okay. But I think perhaps we need somebody who's trained, who can help us figure out how to take those, like, the school parcel. What do we, I mean, the school board's not going to figure out what the best use of that land is to bring money into the city. They're just going to wait till somebody comes and makes them an offer. And I think as a city, we need to be proactive and look at the larger parcels in downtown and figure out what's going to bring jobs here, what's going to bring families here to populate our schools, what's going to bring money in to pay the city to provide services so that we don't overtax on permits and other things like that. I mean, how do you develop a good economic base for your city? And I think that that's based on, you know, the character of the city that you want to have, how do you do that? And I think that that's what we need to really look at.
The distinction I have between a, a, a vision board and a general plan is, the vision, to me, informs the general plan. The general plan has, has maybe more specifics and
Still not many.
But there's not necessarily a philosophical base in a general plan that the general plan's being written from.
But part of the process of general planning is to start right where you're talking about, with the vision, and then to try to create something with the various elements, as council personnel
Well, then we're all in agreement.
You what?
Then we're all in agreement.
So, ma, mayor, when you
We're in agreement of going forward with the general plan. We always tend to want to
If you read, even, even our very dated general plan, the mayor's right, you read it, it, every element starts with a vision statement, basically.
Right.
And, and you, and we're not hamstrung into just the existing elements. You can add elements, you know, and
And you can change the vision.
And you can change the vision. So it, I mean, I, again, we're kind of tied in where I, I understand what you're talking about, but I think that, yeah, there's an easy synthesis in that you, you start with the vision, and you write your specifics in each element. But each element starts with a vision for that, for that particular part. So, have you, have you looked at our general plan, by the way? And, and you can, have you thought about, I mean, I would welcome, I think all of us would welcome suggestions you have for how to maybe restructure our elements, or, you know, implement what you're talking about. But I do think the mayor's right, you, the vision, the general plan starts with a vision. That's, that's what it starts with.
That's where the big discussion is, when you, and you engage the community, what kind of a town do you want to have? And that idea, like you say, we, you know, we did that years ago, where do we want to be in 50 years? 50 years has now passed almost for me. And it's sort of stayed pretty close, but there are certain inexorable forces that you can't control. But in general, we've done better than most of California, so, let's see.
Quick comment. I would like to see in our general plan that we have climate resiliency or climate action as one of the overarching guiding principles. Because when you start looking at all the elements that can fall under, under the general plan, definitely climate resiliency and, and action makes sense.
Okay. Bobby?
The only thing I wanted to add is that, you know, like the design guidelines, to me, these documents are both nitpicky specific and so vague at the same time, that the philosophical part of them seems too vague to me, too unclear. We want to have a small-town spirit. I don't even know what that means, really.
Well, that's a criticism of how it was written, it should be improved. Exactly. Okay? I mean, I think you're exactly right. Sometimes these general plans, as the mayor well knows, are written by kind of boilerplate paste, and everybody just wants to get it done and get it over with. I don't think we want to do it that way. So I think, I think that that's the time to come in and put meat on that bone, so to speak. What does that mean? Agreed.
When we did the, that, that cultural resources thing, that
It was, it was a little too specific for some people.
Well, what, what struck me is it was very clear back in 1970, when you said, when development occurs, that wasn't putting in a post hole. That was talking about a bulldozer, you know, taking out
Exactly.
Most of Thousand Oaks and
Right.
Building houses. And yet we have raised our consciousness, and we have seen the consequences of our, the way we were visioning before, and we do need to
Yeah. And what, what people read in 2010 by earth-disturbing activity is not the same as 1975.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's one of the reasons why the state has asked, or required that we do this every so many years. But it's so hard to do, and it's expensive, that we tend to push it off. Okay, well, we're just about to, Mr. City Manager, yes?
Very quickly, just wanted to note a couple things. One, the, we had some discussion about the parking study. That is coming back to city council on February 12th, so there'll be discussion at that point, and how the city council would like to proceed on that. Also, I didn't hear any resolution in terms of the council, in terms of whether or not you wanted to change the requirements for the planning commissioners. So, we'll, we'll wait, staff will wait, and of course, we could take direction from council at this meeting, or any future meeting, if council wanted to put that on
I certainly plan on bringing that up at future agendas.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll leave it at that. And then also, just wanted to note that unfortunately, our community development director, Luke Connelly, couldn't be here this evening. He is stuck home with a very, very bad back. Our associate planner, Suzanne Riegel, is here
With a bad foot.
So, yes.
Yeah.
That's all, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you all for coming and contributing. We are adjourned.